I'd like to bring the regular meeting of the Butte Silver Bow Council of Commissioners for tonight, July 6th, 2016, to order. Clerk, can we have a roll call, please?
We have 12 present and zero absent.
All right, full boat. Commissioner Anderson, would you care to lead us in a prayer and the pledge of allegiance?
Almighty God, we implore you, look upon us and guide us this night as we make decisions which will greatly affect our community of Butte Silver Bow. Direct our thoughts, words, and deeds so that we please you and best serve our fellow citizens. Amen.
Amen.
In the United States of America, with liberty and justice, and justice for all.
Is there any public comment on items that are on tonight's agenda? Is there anyone wishing to give public comment on tonight's agenda items?
Our Order Bandar, 2601 Grand Avenue, Section 2, Consent Agenda Communications, Item Number 16, Communication 16-308. Requesting Council Commissioners to call for the formation of a Community Council to advise the Council relative to the determination of policy for usage of the metal mines license tax distribution funds, hard rock mining impact funds received by the city county government of Butte Silver Bow. I do not expect you to call for the formation of a Community Council, given that after the voters approved the current Butte Silver Bow Charter in 2007, nine years ago, this council still has not determined a procedure of which to comply with Clause E of said charter, one of the 12 explicit powers and duties and responsibilities of this council. But in that, I believe more than 70% of the people disagreed in a Montana Standard Quota Question of the Week with your last decision relative to the allocation of hard rock monies, and in that, there were or no other local business proposals for usage of the hard rock funds, I would think that you would at least want to discuss how to improve the policy relative to the procedure of which the funds are being applied for and allocated.
Thank you, Mr. Bandar. Further public comment, just state your name and address and what your agenda item is.
10 North Lake Drive, Butte, Montana.
One more time, Mr. Milanovic.
Philip Milanovic, 10 North Lake Drive, Butte, Montana.
Thank you, sir.
I'd like to make a comment on the abatement of this money to Rex and Matt and Ben. I'd like to start by thanking them for purchasing that Funk Copper King. And if the Montana Standard is correct, they have budgeted $8.1 million to improve that property and turn it into a viable entity. So I thank them for that, and I'm sure the entire community does. That having been said, the question then becomes, why are the taxpayers of Butte subsidizing them? The renovations are going to take place with or without the subsidy of the taxpayers of Butte Silver Bow. They have said they have budgeted 8.1 million, and being the prudent business people that they are, I'm sure that is to see the project to completion. Now, I would agree with the former speaker that you, the committee here, agreed to grant them $200,000 last month. I say that's just icing on the profit cake. It is not the purpose of the Butte city taxpayers to increase profit for private industry. In the past, you have granted money to the likes of Montana Resources, a multi-billion dollar corporation. I think the taxpayers' money would be better spent on schools and infrastructure in the city of this community. Also, I would think that the group should be willing to hire at least 50% of their workforce and subs from the Butte community. I also think for the gift of $200,000 that they do not have to repay, they should also be required to buy at least 50% of their materials and equipment from Butte Silver Bow vendors. The whole intent of the charter does not state in any faction or form that we, the taxpayers, should subsidize any private organization. This group did not ask for complete financial disclosure from the people who were given that money. Was that money needed, or is that just a gift, icing on the cake? I submit that it's icing on the cake. They would have never entered the business venture without adequate financing. It is not our job as taxpayers to subsidize private industry that can afford to pay their own way. Let's see. Oh, the issue of permits. This is from Butte Silver Bow. This isn't from Phil Milanovic. You can have your people produce the permits issued to this group. They have violated almost every permit issued, not by my statement, by Butte Silver Bow's statements. I would request that in the future that not take place. Now, if this body feels that they have to subsidize, put icing on the cake to private corporations, I think you're doing the taxpayer a great disservice. They have adequate money, or they would have never entered the venture, 8.1 million, by their own admission. That doesn't require any taxpayer money. So I vote against that as a taxpayer. I think it's just icing on the cake, as was the $200,000. I don't think they should have got that. And what did we get for that? Are they going to hire 50% of their people from Butte? Subcontractors? How about buying 50% of their materials from Butte vendors? What about the hotels and motels that didn't get any money? Now, we're adding all these rooms. Is it fair for them who are paying taxes for us to subsidize their competition? I don't think so. I think you should rethink that issue. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Milanovic. And I'm just going to ask you real quickly for some clarification here and provide clarification for the rest of the folks. Anyone wishing to speak further on the subject that Mr. Milanovic spoke on, you'll be afforded your opportunity to do so on the public hearing, which is our second agenda item here. I just want to confirm that you are speaking as an opponent to the...
Yes.
Okay, very good. Any further comments on this item? Please, please wait until we get to the public hearing part. So with that said, is there any further public comment on agenda items tonight not pursuant to the public hearing? Seeing none, we'll move into the approval of the minutes from the June 15th regular meeting and the special meeting of June 20th, 2016, and the special meeting from June 22nd, 2016. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve the minutes of the regular meeting, June 15th, 2016, the special meeting on June 20th, 2016, and the special meeting that occurred on June 22nd, 2016.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We have no items added to tonight's agenda. I'll have a very brief chief executive report, starting with the fact that we are underway with the development, well, I guess, the presentation of this year's preliminary budget, and are in the midst of accepting public comment on the items as they have been presented already and will be continued to be presented next week at the committee of the whole week meeting. I know Finance and Budget Director Gleason will be giving a presentation to the full council body on the preliminary budget, and folks still have an opportunity to get on to our website and take a short survey to give us what your input as citizens and taxpayers are in the development of the budget. Further, we will be scheduling a couple of question and answer sessions and presentations at a couple of other public venues, so I would encourage you to get on and give us your input as we move ahead with the budget presentation. And then, this coming Monday, July 11th, we have 11:30 a.m. in the archives, the Montana League of Cities and Towns is making its tour around the state to meet with elected officials in their member communities, Butte being one of the larger cities. And so, all of the commissioners tonight, as well as other elected officials in not just Butte but the surrounding areas, are invited to attend what they're calling a legislative lunch. And the agenda, whereas I think we can get it out there, we'll post it on our website for folks to be able to look at. It's going to be touching on what some of the priorities are currently and what could be added to the list of priorities for the Montana League of Cities and Towns heading into the upcoming legislative session in 2017. So again, that gathering will be at 11:30, Monday, July 11th, at the Butte Silver Bow Public Archives. With that, I do know, and I didn't have time to look in depth on this evening's agenda, but I have asked our Public Works Director and our Roads Operation Manager to get on the agenda to come before this body to give a presentation relative to our road projects that are going to be taken on this year, both through Butte Silver Bow County and MDT, and what the look over the next few years is as we start taking this systematic approach within the confines of our budget to start improving our streets around here. And just stay tuned with that. We did start one of the big ones today, or a big construction project today down at the intersection of Holmes and Harrison Avenue, where we'll be preparing the, making the underpavement improvements of our water main system there so that the MDT can move forward with the final mill fill of the second half of Harrison Avenue out to the Highway 2 interchange. So if you're wondering what the activity is there at Holmes and Harrison, I know I was covered in the newspaper recently, but that's a big construction project that'll lead to a future road improvement project. And in addition to that, Mr. Schultz and Mr. Sanford will be giving this group an update on what the road schedule is for the rest of this summer and the summers ahead. So that concludes my chief executive report for this evening. We'll move into Section 1, Bid Openings, Public Hearings. We have got one of each, so I will ask our county attorney if we have proper publication for both of the bid opening, Communication 16-293 and the public hearing, Communication 16-285. Counselor?
Mr. Chief Executive, there is proof of publication for both items, and both do appear to be in order.
All right, thank you. So moving into the bid opening, Communication 16-293, Matthew Moore, Metro Operations Manager with the Public Works Department, requesting time tonight to conduct a bid opening regarding the Butte Silver Bow Montana Tech Wastewater Gravity Sewer Project. Mr. Moore.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Here's a scorecard for everyone again. Hope it helps. Taking estimates for Montana Tech Gravity Sewer, it's approximately 2,288 new feet of new drainage and 10-inch PVC sewer pipe. This is part one of two parts. The next part will be in two weeks. It will consist of the lift station for this sanitary sewer project.
Okay, very good. One more time on the entity, Matt.
Montana Underground Construction Corporation.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensure to company that does appear to be in order.
Okay.
The bid for Montana Underground Construction Corporation is $299,987.06.
$299,987.06.
Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% from a licensure to company that does appear to be in order.
Okay, thank you.
The bid for Central Excavation, $359,706.10.
Everybody get that? Good?
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond from a licensure to company in the amount of 10% of the bid that does appear to be in order.
Very good. Okay, got it?
The final bid is from H.H. Contracting, 501 Yale Avenue, Butte, Montana.
Okay.
And Mr. Chief Executive, there is a bid bond in the amount of 10% of the bid from a licensure to company that does appear to be in order.
Okay, very good.
The final bid for H.H. Contracting is $255,857.56.
Okay. Any questions for Mr. Moore? Commissioner Anderson.
Mr. Chief Executive, Matt, could you tell me over here on the estimate, it's 312, 648, and who did that estimate?
I...
What?
I...
Okay, thank you.
Nothing further. Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I would move to refer the previous bids back to the Public Works Department and await their recommendation back to this body.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything further on the question? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Communication Number 16-285, a public hearing, Karen Burns, Community Development Director, requesting time to have a public hearing this evening to receive comment on a proposed five-year tax abatement for the Copper King Inn renovation project. Ms. Burns?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, members of council. I am Karen Burns, Director of Community Development, and we're here tonight to have a public hearing to receive comment based on a request and an application for a local tax abatement for remodel or reconstruction of a commercial structure. This type of tax abatement is allowed under state law, 1524, 1502, and can be applied to a project in a community that qualifies for that. This project, the Copper King Hotel, meets every criteria for this tax abatement under the state law. So the chief, the community is then obligated to forward this request to have a tax abatement to our governing body. By our governing body has the decision-making power to concur with the ability to grant this tax abatement. This tax abatement only affects the local property taxes that would be assessed on the increase in value of the remodel of this commercial structure. So I wanted to clarify that the folks that have bought, purchased the Copper King, purchased the property, they are on the hook for the value of the taxes that are already currently being assessed on the value of that property. I asked for some figures on that earlier today. The value that that building is currently being assessed at is just over $1.2 million with taxes being paid in the amount of $17,807. So if you want to think of that, that's basically the base, right? So as they make improvements, and their estimated improvements and increase in value in the structure, the estimates that I gave you in the communication lets you know that we're estimating that the increase in value will have a taxable market value of about $6.5 million. And that is the portion of the increase in value that they are asking for this five-year abatement to be applied to. So even with that five-year abatement being applied, given what we know in our estimations, they would still be paying $28,000 a year on the very first year of this tax abatement on top of the 17 already included. So this is generating taxes for our community. This is a statewide allowed tool for economic development for these sort of distressed properties in communities to incentivize their redevelopment and reconstruction and expansion. This is not the first time Butte Silver Bow has been asked to apply this remodel, reconstruction, or expansion of a commercial structure abatement in our community. We have done it before to assist with other blighted or distressed properties, to get them back on the tax rolls in the most effective manner possible. And so, and also, I wanted to let you know that it's a statewide program. I'm stating this for those in the audience that may not understand, that this is authorized in every community in the state of Montana and is used many, many times in other communities in the state of Montana, like it's been used here in the past. So it is a very valuable tool that we have, the local option. The taxes that are abated are the local taxes. The state still receives their money. The universities receive their money. The school system receives their money. So I just wanted to clarify those positions. The applicants are here to give another brief presentation about their project, and tonight I wanted to review really quickly before they give that presentation, the procedure that we follow. The procedure is that application, the request is made. We are obligated, if they meet the criteria, to schedule a public hearing to receive public comment on that application. We're doing that tonight. There's no action requested of this body tonight. This is purely received public comment. We will then probably, if we choose to, submit a request for concurrence of the abatement, and then a resolution would have to be passed by this body to complete the process. After all of those things happen, then an application is submitted to the Department of Revenue where they would take into account, we've followed all the procedures and everything, every box has been checked before an abatement can actually take place. So I just wanted to let you know the process. Thank you.
So tonight is just to gather public comment. There won't be any decisions made this evening relative to the granting or not granting of a tax abatement?
Correct.
Are there any further questions for Ms. Burns? Okay.
I'd like to invite Rex or Matt if they'd like to speak for just a second, if that's okay.
Very good. Mr. Nissler, you want to state your name for the address for the record?
Chief Executive, excuse me, Chief Executive and members of the commission, thanks for having us. I'm going to take a moment to flip this board over, so people in the audience can see it.
Do you want to be there?
My address is 81 Jefferson River Road, and I turned it to the audience because you guys have all seen this rendering before. So you've heard our presentation. We were here a couple of weeks ago as a part of this.
Just to complete your address, 81 Jefferson River Road?
Three Forks, Montana.
Three Forks.
Excuse me. So I'm not going to give a full presentation tonight. I didn't prepare anything, but what I will do is recap on the project that we are building. And, you know, we're bringing a wonderful, we feel that we're bringing a wonderful project to the south end of Harrison and especially to Butte, Montana. You know, the Copper King has, it has not seen its glory days for a number of years, and I'm saying this more for the audience than you guys because you've already heard it, but, you know, the Copper King was a hub in the community, and we feel that it can be a hub in the community again. And we think that that's a critical part of creating a community, is having a facility that really serves the purpose of everybody within the community for a meeting space, someplace to gel, someplace to really search out the heart and the full meaning of what it is to be a community. And so, we feel that this facility is going to bring that, both with the event space renovations that we're doing and the money that we're putting into the technology of that space, as well as attracting the Ribbon Chop House to our facility. As Karen stated, the stuff that we're doing here is well within the boundaries of the legal system that we have available to us and the funding that's available to us within this great state. So, you know, it's intended to drive commerce, it's intended to encourage economic development. You know, I hear a lot about the hard rock stuff and that that's taking money out of taxpayers' pockets, and as we all know, that money was actually set aside, not by the taxpayer body, but rather from the mining, and a lot of people that are here tonight weren't at that meeting here a couple of weeks ago. So, you know, that obviously needs to be addressed at some level, but, you know, we have asked for the support of the community of Butte before we ever even got involved in this project, and we were welcomed with open arms, and we thank everybody for that, not only from a public perspective, from a political perspective, but also from a community perspective. There isn't a person that we don't run into on the street that doesn't thank us for the project that we're putting together out there with the Copper King. And we haven't heard, I personally have not heard one negative comment. Everybody is very, very excited to have us. And the other thing that I want to speak to is the community workforce that we have and the community suppliers that we have. A lot of people think that we bring everything in from New Mexico or Mexico or some other place, but, you know, we're using mostly local subs. We have a subcontractor base... We have a subcontractor base from around the state that we can draw from, and yet we've reached out to local subs and local suppliers. We have some very large contracts with local suppliers and local subcontractors, and they're wonderful people, they're competitive, and they're excited to be a part of this project. So we're excited to have them. I think that we're very bullish on Butte, and we want to make this project work, and we expect that it will, and we thank you for your support, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thanks, Matt. Any questions for Mr. Nissler, or Karen? Commissioner Shaw?
It's sort of the elephant in the room, Matt, you know, as we have been getting some communications and emails today about labor unions, and I don't really know what the answers are, we're just collecting data like tonight, but could you tell us what the plan is for union-type wages or jobs?
I certainly can speak to that, Cindy, and thanks for the question, that's a great question, and as we all know, Butte has a large labor force that is union-associated, or associated with the union. And, you know, we have had a lot of opportunity to work with some of these crews and some of these subcontractors, and we have contracts with union workforce out there right now, several different union contractors. And so, you know, I'm not quite sure what you've been hit with as far as that question. I've had a few people that represent local unions phone me up and ask me certain questions that are very, very open-ended, but they don't really have any specific answer. And to those people, what I have said is that I would like to get more information from them, and as of now, from those certain individuals, no information has come. And the email was the request there, that I get some email information from those people. So, you know, I'm only as good as the intel that I have available to me, and sometimes I think that there's people out there that are grinding an axe, but they just soon keep it dull.
Further questions? Comments? Okay, seeing none, I'll open the public hearing.
Thank you.
Thank you, Matt. First call for proponents, anyone out there wishing to speak in favor of the proposed tax abatement? Second call for proponents.
Hi, my name's Chris Hafer, I live at sixty-fourty-eight Porter, here in Butte. I speak in favor of it, we are a local union contractor, have supplied concrete out there, probably going to do some paving, different things. I live south of town, is, drive by there all the time, the Copper King has been slow for several years, and I think it'll be good for Butte, and just keeping some of my people employed, and I think it's healthy, healthy business for the Copper King to be open, good for the town.
Thanks, Chris.
Attorney General Bandra, twenty-six oh one Grand Avenue, anything that improves the community, please for. I would like to clarify that my previous comments did not refer to this particular project. I believe the Montana Standard Question of the Week was relative to a different project. I would also like to clarify that this is metal mines license tax distribution funds. These are tax monies. They are license fees paid by the mining industry to the state and returned to us. They are not local taxes from the people, but they are tax monies.
I would just clarify for the record, not necessarily responding to Mr. Bandra, but more to the information he just provided, he was referring to the hard rock funds that were granted last month, not the tax abatement funds that are being gathered for comment this evening. Are there any other proponents to the project? Final call for proponents. Okay, seeing none, I would ask for additional opponents, we had one speak at the beginning of the meeting.
Good evening, Chief Executive and Commissioners, my name is Mark Anderlich, I'm Executive Officer, United here Local Four Twenty-Seven, my address is two oh eight East Main Street in Missoula. And we are a union that represents hospitality and service workers in Montana and Idaho. We've been Butte for over one hundred years. Currently, we represent food service and environmental service workers at St. James Hospital, food service workers, and cleaners at the Butte School District, hotel workers at the Quality Inn and Suites, and concession workers and ticket sellers at your civic center. Before you, as a request from the new owners of the Copper King for a five-year tax abatement valued around a quarter million dollars, a remodeled and successful Copper King Hotel and Convention Center would be an important and vital addition to the hotel and convention industry in Butte. It would attract meetings and conventions that would otherwise go elsewhere, and that would be good for local hotels. However, the developers of the Copper King are quite vague as to the quality of the jobs that will be provided to the community. It is well-known that in the hospitality industry, most frontline jobs are low-wage, with few, if any, benefits. Our concern is that Butte Silver Bow may invest, invest public money, invest taxpayer money, into a private for-profit enterprise, and not do everything in its power to help ensure the public gets the maximum return on their investment dollars. The tax abatement is clearly a public investment. Butte Silver Bow should at least attempt to ensure that jobs, that the jobs created, with the help of the public investment, have a decent chance of being quality jobs. Mr. Milanovic, I've just cited him, he also has some other reasonable demands as a developer, to ensure a maximum return for the taxpayer's investment. I would look at some other kinds of returns for the taxpayer investment. Butte does not need more low-wage, low-benefit jobs. Butte needs quality jobs, so more workers can be productive and contributing members of the community. One way in which our union has successfully addressed this issue is through the use of labor peace agreements. These agreements were pioneered by our union in the face of weak federal enforcement of worker, workers' rights established by the U.S. Constitution. A labor peace agreement is simply a legally binding agreement between the developer-owner and the union, whereby workers' rights to organize are protected, and the developer-owner will not face a campaign of opposition by the union. It does not guarantee that the workplace will become a union workplace, but it does guarantee that workers will have a fair chance to seriously consider whether or not they wish to support forming a union. They would be able to decide without the threat of retaliation or termination by either party. There are other parts of a labor peace agreement as well, and I have emailed each of you a copy of one, and I will give another copy for your information, so you can see what I'm talking about. And I would, well, how would a labor peace agreement provide for quality jobs? For example, labor peace agreements laid the foundation for the present in Las Vegas, where eighty percent of all the hotel housekeepers start at a living wage, have a pension, have dignity on the job, have excellent healthcare insurance for them and their families. These thousands of housekeepers are active part of today's Las Vegas middle class. I spoke with Matt Nissler last month, and I tried to discuss with him about a labor peace agreement. He refused to consider such an agreement at the time. Granted, this was probably the first time he had heard of such an agreement, so he might not have taken me too seriously. But he did not ask for further information, but I am more than happy to provide him with this information. Therefore, we ask you to postpone your decision on granting the tax abatement to the Copper King. We would like more time to convince Mr. Nissler and his associates that a labor peace agreement is in everyone's interest, especially the public's interest, whom the developers are asking for investment money. Our union has many members in Butte, and they know how hard it is to make it on low wages, and they know the benefits of union membership. Some employees, and some employers also know the benefits of an organized workforce, as union workers have more longevity, provide better work, and invest themselves more into the workplace than unorganized workers. Union workers are able to contribute more to the community as well. And I've been told by some building trade union representatives that there are no union construction workers currently at the site. This should be, there should probably be looking at a project labor agreement as well, before you give up the public's money. That said, again, we ask you to postpone this vote, I know you're not having it tonight, but later on, on granting this tax abatement at the Copper King Hotel, so that we are able to further negotiate with the developers on a labor peace agreement, and perhaps other issues too. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Anderlich. Further opponents? Mr. Milanovic, please state your name and address one more time.
Philip Milanovic, ten North Lake Drive. I want to clarify my position, and clarify some of the smoke and mirrors that have been presented here. We all know that a corporation or a business is going to have to pay taxes. We all pay taxes, and especially businesses pay taxes. And anybody entering a business calculates those taxes into their performance. So they expect to pay the appropriate taxes. Everybody's in favor of this project, why wouldn't we be? But what we're not in favor of is subsidizing private corporations that have adequate funds to pay for their own taxes and their own procedures. They have, by their own admission, funded eight point one million dollars. You gifted them icing of two hundred thousand dollars. For what? They do not need the money, it's a private corporation, and it is ill-use of the taxpayer's money. The taxpayers of this community would rather have the infrastructure improved, aid to the needy, and a better school system, rather than handing multimillion-dollar corporations and this, this particular corporation taxpayers' money in any form. This is the U.S. of A. Private industry stands on their own two feet, they pay their own way, and they pay their own taxes. We, the people of Silver Bow County, do not want to subsidize private industry that can afford to pay their own way. And all this comment about state money, that's all taxpayer money. It's subsidizing people, it's icing on the cake, and it's not appropriate. Thank you.
Final call for any opponents?
Chief Executive Council. I have a question. When this corporation bought?
Ma'am, can you, can you state your name and address?
I'm sorry, Lynn Ferguson, two oh five South Crystal Street, Butte, Montana.
Okay.
When the corporation bought the existing Copper King, did they pay the back taxes?
Ma'am, unfortunately, according to the rules of statute on public hearings, we're not allowed to answer any questions, this is your opportunity to say.
Okay, I just, when I bought my house, when we bought our house in two thousand ten, it was a very distressed property. It still is. But I paid approximately thirty-two hundred dollars in back taxes to clear the title so I could buy it. And I'm still pay, and I'm paying eight hundred dollars a year. We're getting a roof this year finally, only because my father died, and I got a little bit of inheritance. But we bought a distressed property, and we got no tax abatement. That's all I have.
Thank you, ma'am. Final call for opponents?
My name is Stuart McCarville. I live at three thirteen South Washington, here in Butte. My question is, what are we getting for this two hundred thousand dollars? It's a good project, but it seems to be well-funded by their own admission, they have eight one point one million dollars going in. I know a number of people in Butte that are working two or three jobs, and a lot of them are in this industry, the hotel industry. So this would be a chance to put some, some structure, structure on allowing them to participate in a union arrangement with the union, because these low-paying jobs cause high turnover. When they have high turnover, they have a lot of training expenses, and businesses are now starting to catch on to that fact, that it costs a lot of money to constantly have a high turnover. The economists also talk about the velocity of money. If you give a, if you give a billionaire a hundred dollar bill, he's going to sock it away somewhere, and it won't get circulated. But you give the low-income people a hundred dollar bill, they'll use it to spend to pay their bills, and it circulates through the economy, and everyone benefits from it. When they passed that minimum wage law out of Seattle, everyone was afraid that it was going to kill business, and they found the opposite was true, that it expanded business, and there's more money in circulation. So, we spend two hundred thousand dollars of taxpayer's money, to them, it's a drop in the bucket, but to this community, it's a lot of tax revenue that could well be used in schools. Nobody knows better than you people where the money needs to go. So that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Any further opponents? Okay, seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Moving into section two, our consent agenda, I'd make a call for any friendly amendments or segregations, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive, I would like to segregate item twenty-seven, that's sixteen dash three one nine, and item twenty-nine, sixteen dash three twenty-one.
Okay. Further segregations? Twenty-seven and twenty-nine have been segregated. Okay. Seeing nothing further, Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to approve section two, Consent Agenda A-one through six, and B-one through thirty-one, with the exceptions of item twenty-seven and item twenty-nine.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything further on the question? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. We'll move to segregation, sixteen dash three one nine, Julia M. Crane, Superfund Program Data Administrator in the Planning Department, advising Council of Commissioners regarding communication sixteen dash one eighty-five, submitted by Carl Hafer, in reference to his concerns about contamination within Grove Creek. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. As you all remember, we've been holding this in the committee the whole for several weeks, awaiting a letter from Mr. Muller with the EPA. Just a little history, is there was a TRC meeting, a Technical Review Committee meeting that Mr. Hafer was attending, he's also had a chance to talk to Mr. Muller, and Mr. Muller did provide the letter, it's attached to this communication. But since the original communication, one sixteen dash one eighty-five, was brought to, brought forward to us by Carl, I thought I would give an opportunity to speak, and we will probably continue with the recommendation, but I thought it would only fair to give Carl a chance to make comments. So, Carl, would you like to come up to the microphone and give us your final comments on this, and then we will go ahead?
Microphone here?
Yes, sir, right there.
Your hand, your right hand's right next to her.
There you go, and it's on.
Thanks, Carl. Excuse me. Thank you for the opportunity to address you. I've been here about this a couple of different times before, and this is a continuation, I call it a continuation of the Environmental Committee meeting that we had on the sixteen. I'm in receipt, yesterday, I went and I came to the courthouse here and picked up a, from downstairs there in the office, a communication, and the cover letter on the communication is written by Julia Crane. Her title is a Superfund Program Data, Data Administrator. And it says on here, and I'm not going to read it, but it says on here in the first, second, third paragraph- first, second, third paragraph, uh, I had spoken with Cindy Shaw, uh, prior to my picking this up and told her that I didn't think I was going to, uh, I was just going to let the procedure, you know, the thing take its course. But when I picked this up and read this letter, I see in this, uh, deal from Julia Crane that, uh, it says on the third, first, second, third paragraph, it says, "Mr. Hafer expressed concerns about the contamination with Grove Creek east of Montana Street in the vicinity of Montana Street, Beef Trail, and Hanson Road." Most of my comments at that 16th meeting were regarding Grove Creek west of Montana Street. And I didn't spend a whole bunch of time talking about west of Grove Creek, but I did give some information regarding what had transpired in Grove Creek over, for say, possibly the last hundred years. You know, that's where we had the city dump. That's where the, uh, Copper Hill Sports Center is now. Uh, that is where Clark Taylors was. And, uh, I, I do take exception for her saying that east. I do have a lady here today, I don't have her here, she's, she's here of her own accord, of course, Mrs. Reeve, and, uh, she has some, uh, good information regarding this. And in the last couple of days, I have done some, did some personal, uh, further research, uh, and I'm, I'm familiar with some of these people I did it with. And I, I find that, uh, in the eighties, uh, that a man named, uh, Charlie Easterday, excuse me, I don't know how many of you people know Charlie Easterday, but he's a pretty astute person. Has a couple of degrees from, uh, Montana Tech. He does quite a bit of private investigating. Uh, he's a pretty learned fellow. Uh, he sued, uh, Butte, Montana and, uh, Butte, uh, at Arco, whatever, and he won the lawsuit regarding land which is in that area, south of, south Montana and west of Montana Street. And he won the lawsuit. And he won the lawsuit because at that particular time, he lived on south Montana and he had a number of relatives, of neighbors who died due to inhalation of the dust and et cetera off of the Taylors, Clark Taylors. And, uh, he won that. Uh, he, he says that, uh, Mrs. Reeve informed me that she talked to him also, that those records of that lawsuit are in Mark Sullivan's, uh, when he was a judge here, so they would be available. I don't know this procedure, but anybody who'd like to see that. And, uh, Charlie Easterday, uh, called me early this morning and said his health wasn't, uh, and I know his health is bad, but I, I was going to bring him up here or I was going to ask him, and he said he couldn't make it. But anyway, uh, I, I did receive this letter. I, matter of fact, I received it yesterday. I received it yesterday in my mail. I received a copy of it in the, this information that I picked up in this lady's office yesterday or day before yesterday, yesterday, yes. And it had this letter from Julie Crane. It had, uh, this letter from Mr. Mohler, uh, who was, uh, in attendance at that meeting on the 16th. And, uh, in, in his letter, he said that the EPA was not going to pursue more investigation on that property. He said possibly in two years. Well, uh, I take, uh, I take exception to that and I did talk to a, a person associated with the EPA yesterday on a long-distance phone call. And they said that in the near future, now I didn't press them to tell me exactly what they meant by the near future, but I did tell them that I wasn't real happy with Mr. Mohler, who I did take clear all over that Grove Creek, clear up to where it comes out of, uh, Little Basin Creek, you know, where it goes down through Copper Mountain and it goes down there and crosses Montana Street right where Mrs. Reed lives. And, uh, Mrs. Reed has spent, uh, her family, who's lived there for many years, has spent their own money to have some of that tested. And it, I, I really feel it'll be long after my demise, I'm sure, but if you people do not, or by you people, if whoever, the responsible people, do not address that in a timely manner, it's going to haunt you.
Mr. Shaw?
Thank you. And Carl, I really appreciate your comments and I know that this is a passion for you and I really think it's, uh, exceptional for a community member to, you know, it's, it's hard to do. You come forward with a, something that might not be a, a very popular subject, but, you know, back when you first gave us your communication, you asked the council and the chief executive to address reasoning with regard to that contamination and future plans. And we're not the, we're, we're, it's really not our purview. We're not the experts on that. And so we, we had you go to the Technical Review Committee meeting, talk to Mr. Mohler, who's with the EPA. They're, they're the ones that make, they set the rules, they, they do what they do. And I believe that Bob's letter addressed those questions. I'm not saying that they're the answers you wanted to hear, but the county really, we, we were pretty much tapped as far as the sorts of things that we can do, you know, as far as our expertise.
Oh, I'm not...
And I hope, so I hope Mr. Mohler's letter, at least it was open-ended enough to say that if there was any future concerns, and you asked about future plans...
Yeah.
Future concerns that you might, uh, be able to, they could open up the case again. I don't know.
Sure.
But I just hope that that, that we, I hope you think that the council has met your needs in this communication because pretty much that's all we can do.
And I want you to know that, uh, I, I appreciate the cooperation you and this lady right here have made available to me.
So keep, keep fighting the fight and, uh...
Oh, I am. I, uh, have a semi appointment in Denver here in the near future. I am, I'm not going to give up on this.
Okay, well, I would go...
I, I, you know, I've got a lot of time. I don't have a lot of money, but I know how to get some. And Miss, I don't know if Mrs. Reeve...
I see.
Yes, I do. I'd appreciate it if you would, Margie.
Okay. Oh, could you please identify yourself and your name and address?
Thank you.
Thanks, Carl.
Thanks, Carl.
My name is Margie Reeve. I live at 2800 Hanson Road. Uh, I have property that Grove Creek goes through. Um, I've been there almost, I should say, 43 or 44 years. My parents had it. It's almost 50 years in our family and Kinman's owned it before us. Um, I think the problem here with Grove Creek is it's contaminated, also with the groundwater, and it's just not an Arco problem. It is a Butte-Silver Bow problem because of your landfill dump. I remember going to the dump with my dad from Kennedy Street, years going over Hanson Road, when it was dirt at that time, and going over the old wooden bridge on Montana Street and going up to the dump when you hit, uh, I want to say where they got the little, they built it up and it used to go down and it would flood when it, when the creek got a overflow, it would flood the road and you couldn't, had to go through water. But, um, the dump, uh, actually did, I think it's also a thorn in Grove Creek's side. Um, the, I can remember the cars as a little girl being dumped in the creek, oil, gas, I mean, uh, probably lead from the paint because now they're, have the big lead thing. So in years and years, and how many years, I'd have to go back to see how far that Grove Creek, you know, the dump was there, plus the Clark Mill. So both of them, uh, added some contamination here to this creek. And that creek still has contamination all the way from your dump, through the Clark, through Seymour's or, uh, Red Mountain Truck Lines, through my property, through, uh, the trailer park Grove Creek, and it also goes down in through, it goes down into Silver Bow Creek, in which Black Tail Creek comes into it. But, uh, this goes, this goes into the Columbia River. This creek all goes down into Silver Bow Creek and it actually goes into the Columbia River. I mean, we're cleaning up Silver Bow Creek and we're cleaning up all these creeks, but we're not looking at Grove Creek. We're ignoring it. And it is a Butte-Silver Bow project. Everybody's shoving this also on Arco and it is Arco, but it is also Butte-Silver Bow. My groundwater has been contaminated. I got a letter from the Butte Health Department in the 1980s to quit drinking my well water. I drank my well water, it was drilled in 1970. We drank it all those years. In the 1980s something, they told me to quit drinking it because of the landfill in Butte Silver Bow, the water was contaminated. I had to go 600 feet across my field to get Butte, Butte water. I said to my husband, I tell, we get older, I guess we get smarter and wiser. I said, "Why am I paying a water bill? I shouldn't be paying this." They contaminated my water that I drank for years. But I'm just going back to this, this problem. I feel it's Butte-Silver Bow's problem, it's Arco's problem, and I think it has to be addressed. This creek and this groundwater has to be taken care of because it's going to be a thorn in Arco and your side. And like Carl says, I'm not going away. I'm hoping I live to be 102 years old, so I'm a thorn in your side. And you know I can be that. Okay? All I'm saying is...
I think you'd give a vote for that.
Yes, it's, it's just not Arco problem, it's your problem too. And I think you need to look at it. We're, we're changing Silver Bow Creek back to it, you know, its original name. The Grove Creek is there and everybody's ignoring it. And I think you should, all of you guys should go up to the landfill where they did their work. And I, I mean, I could probably get pictures from people showing the cars and there was a lot of cars. There had to be hundreds of cars in that creek from the old landfill down and up above where the old landfill was. So it's a Butte-Silver Bow project and an Arco. Thank you very much for letting me speak.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Could I make one comment?
Okay, Carl, and then we'll probably, with your, with your indulgence, I'll, I will make the recommendation. But go ahead.
Charlie Easterday said in his memory, there was over 300 cars, junk cars, from, uh, Montana Street to the landfill.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thanks again. Okay, uh, can I go ahead and make another?
Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you. Uh, I would concur with my, with Commissioner Morgan's original communication recommendation to cross-reference communication 16-319 with communication 16-185 and place on file.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there anything on the question? Commissioner Palmer?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I do have a question as far as the recommendation. It's, uh, cross-reference this communication with communication 185 and place on file. So that's placing this communication on file after it's cross-referenced, but the 185 is still in the committee of the whole and active, correct?
Yes, so they would both be placed on file.
Okay, well...
Right? We can do that? Just cross-reference them and...
Yeah, I don't think that's what it says, but that's why...
Do we need an amended motion?
Commissioner Morgan, how do you want to make that?
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. When I made this recommendation, I did not intend the communication of 16-185 to be placed on file. I meant it just to be this communication that we're dealing with gets cross-referenced with communication 185 and 16-319 is placed on file.
And we'll place 185 on file next week.
Yeah, that'll come up on its own legs.
Okay. So with that clarification, is there anything further on the question? Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, I'm not sure if this is the right time, but I, I just had a question and perhaps you would know. Um, didn't, uh, before the Copper Mountain was built, didn't it get a clean bill of health from the EPA and everybody? I mean, before it was ever, after it was capped and everything, was, was it a clean bill of health? And then all of a sudden, we've always had that creek come down there, ever since when I was a little kid. And I remember all the cars they're talking about. That's a long ways back. I know fish. But anyway...
With, with the absence of any of our, our day-to-day Superfund staff, I can speak on it, uh, fairly in detail. I mean, it was, um, it was given a, a clean bill of health, so to speak. Um, that clean bill of health relies heavily on continued monitoring of the groundwater and surface water at the site, at which point, you know, we, we're required to sample it, uh, according to the landfill closure laws, twice a year at least. It could be four times a year. And we're, we're meeting all of the, the water quality standards relative to the groundwater beneath that site and leaving that site. Further, there's been a, a number of actions taken within Grove Creek, um, unrelated to the, to the landfill closure that are part of the, the Superfund site, which would be the ones that are referenced relative to, to Arco's responsibility. Uh, I, I mean, I, I would say that, that there will, will, there is, there has been, there is, and there will continue to be monitoring of both the surface and groundwater in Grove Creek and priority any final decision being reached on, uh, the consent decree for the priority soils operable, you know, which includes the Grove Creek drainage. There's going to be further discussion and, uh, uh, information reviewed and, and looked upon before closing this out. So I, I do think that, um, um, nobody's ignoring what, what could be issues down here. I took a lot of notes about some of the stuff that, that, uh, Mr. Hafer and, and Ms. Reeve were saying this evening. But, um, at this point in time, we conduct significant monitoring data on both the surface, groundwater, and soils in that area, and none of that data shows that there is risks posed above what the, the established standards are for human health or the environment for Grove Creek.
Thank you.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Uh, communication 16-321, Terry James, President of Evel Knievel Days, requesting council authorize a special event permit for 2016 Evel Knievel Days. Commissioner Shaw?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. Uh, we originally, uh, recommended to hold this in the committee of the whole pending approvals. We did get the approvals literally at the 11th hour tonight, I think it was about five o'clock. And, uh, I, uh, you know, I mean, that's what we were asking for. Um, I would like to call on Bob Lazry, our Special Events Coordinator. I, I see he's signed this. I, I know that we do ask for a 40-day, uh, lead time. This is a huge event, has a lot of impact on Uptown, and it's just over a couple of weeks, two to three weeks, if you count the days that they set up, that we are asked to approve the permit. That's question number one. So I just would ask you what your, uh, how this all is coming about and why it's so late.
Why's it so late? Well, I know that they've been working hard, Terry and her, to get it here in time. Um, they've been waiting for some more events to come in, some more, uh, some more stunts through, where they come in so they could give a more proper, um, uh, application to, to you guys. So, so it was more exact. So I guess that might be the answer right there.
Okay. Um, can I ask a question of Terry?
Terry, thank you.
We know you. Well, Cindy Shaw, this is my district. I'd say most of it, I go all the way down to East Park and last year was, there were a lot of problems, a lot of issues.
Right.
And I'm very happy to see that the main, the main events that require jumps and that are going to be south of the Mac Center.
Correct.
There, there's still an impact in Uptown. You know, we have neighborhoods, we have the Uptown area infrastructure and it's, it's always kind of a juggling act to get things to work. And it was my understanding after last year, when we did have a couple of public hearings where people are able to comment, and I know the director of our Public Works Department also had some huge concerns about some of the things that were, that had happened. And I believe that a lot of those have been, hopefully, have been ironed out. Um, one of my things is that I feel that a phone call or a knock on the door speaks a thousand words. And I have not had one person that I've spoke to in these areas like East Broadway that have heard anything from anybody, and I haven't even gotten a call from any of your group.
Can I, uh, give you something for...
Today?
Today.
Okay. And you're asking for us to, to approve the road closures today?
Um, well, this was just to let them know what's going on. All of our events are so, because they're stump people, we have to wait for contracts from them.
Okay. But you understand my concern is that you're asking us to approve road closures that might impact people and if we approve it tonight, then what good is it to tell the business owners after the fact? That's all I'm saying.
Well, this is business owners plus...
And the residents.
Residents.
But you see my concern?
Yes.
My concern is that it's sort of after the fact and people have concerns that they'd like to have aired out, and I have concerns, before we approve a permit.
Okay, I think... I think that most of the concerns were property owners, as I recall, on East Park Street and Park Street. There are no closures this year on any of Park Street.
I understand that. Yes. Mr. Chair. I continue to talk, and I should be asking for a follow-up. So East Broadway, we have a business that has to close at the expense of another business, which I don't believe is a fair thing, even if it's just one business. And we have neighbors that should be able to enjoy the peace and enjoyment of their home without, you know, I mean, when they build a house or bought a house years ago, and suddenly there's a huge impact. And it's a week now that you folks are, you know, working to set up and to tear down and have the event. So I just think that it, to me, it just seems like just a human nature thing to do is to reach out to people, and I appreciate the letter, but the ones that are impacted the most, that every year, you know who they are, that either have to close their business or have issues right in their neighborhood or across the street from their house, that they don't get any kind of personal connection. And I know last year, after your event, Laz and JP, they took a lot of heat. You know, they went around, they had public hearings, and they took the heat. And I thought, that was my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, Laz, but that your, you know, your organization was going to do those things and reach out to the people that seemed to be the most affected. And I don't know that that happened.
That's true.
So you have a letter here.
Several meetings.
But we're being asked to approve a permit tonight. So I'm just, I'm laying it out there, that's all. So nobody has gone to, it's less than three weeks away, and no one's gone out to talk to anybody about these street closures that you're already putting in ink and asking us to approve. That's my question.
Is there someone in particular that you want to know that if I've talked to?
Well, if you don't know, then I rest my case. So, yeah, there's several, and they were at meetings that we had, public hearings after last year.
Anybody that had a concern, we tried to get the event away from their area on Park Street.
East Broadway.
Mr. Gallagher?
JP Gallagher, Parks and Parks Director. Commissioner Shaw, I know that it is late as we're coming into this, but Alicia Knievel did go to all the businesses today, and they went and spoke with each one of them to see if they had any concerns. And I know that we are looking at it as it's the 11th hour and stuff, but they are reaching out, something that didn't happen last year, that there was nobody that made contact with them prior to this. It's been, it's a little bit different from a lot of the other festivals because they have to wait to see what events they were going to have and stuff. And we have been meeting since November with this group. And I know that it's not really timely, as we're looking at this, as we're trying to go forward with this, but it's a different event compared to some of the other ones. And we've been working hard with this group, and they've been working hard as well. And so I know that I would like to reach out a little bit quicker as well, but it's just, things kind of came to a head, you know, and got pressed into time, and as we're trying to figure out what events were going to be there, they were trying to figure out the financing that they had to be able to bring into events so that they would know what they would be able to have as well. So it's just kind of been one of those things that is, as we're trying to pull this all together to make sure that it works. I think we've put together a really good plan. We've been in meetings with the police, the fire, the roads throughout, over the last few months. So this hasn't just been dropped on people that are really impacted, that understand the problems with this.
Last follow-up, Commissioner Shaw. We got other commissioners that want to speak?
Okay. I appreciate it. It is my district, and I think it's very important. I appreciate that. You guys have worked your tails off to get this thing to work. Every other major festival, Henri-Rah, Folk Festival, and others have had no trouble getting their things together. They do talk to the neighbors, and they try to make a good, you know, an olive branch offer to these folks that have to, you know, it's an impact on them. And I just don't see that happening, especially after last year, when there was such an uproar. I just, and I'm not trying to call you guys on the carpet, I love Evil Days, but I'm the one that gets the calls. I'm the one that has to deal with these issues. And it seems to me that we put the cart before the horse by sending a letter out after we've approved your permit for all these street closures without getting their input. It just seems to me that that's just putting it backwards, and that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Commissioner Morgan?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I agree with Commissioner Shaw on a lot of these fronts because here you're telling us you approached business owners and people today. Today is the day that we're asked to sign the agreement that is less than 21 days, or less than 20 days from the event. And I question a lot of the signatures, all of these people that are on here I have great respect for, but very few of them are the actual directors of the departments that signed it. So I hope that with their signature, they've actually reviewed your plan and really do stand by it, which I think they do based upon whose signature is on this. My biggest question, and I've had people, business people from Park Street call me before, some big players here, that were upset last year about the big event that was kind of unannounced because nobody knew it was going to happen, and it just showed up. Now, I understand that it's not going to be on Park Street again, but people still are not buying in that we are really under control on this festival. This, to me, is, the way this thing is approved right now would be from a festival, that this would be the first year that it's been here. And this one hasn't been here, or it's been here for 15 years, and I just question it. So are there any events that we don't know about that are going to happen on Evil Knievel Days?
Absolutely not.
That are unsafe?
No.
Thank you.
No, Nick Sanford has made sure every single thing has been very safe as far as street closures, safe for our riders and our stump people, as well as people that are watching it.
Mr. Gallagher?
Commissioner Morgan, just, that's one of the things that we really have gone back and forth with, with all the departments, that it's, there's been a lot of communication back and forth, making sure that everything is in line with Nick, especially going through Dave Schultz as well. And the same thing, when you see Mark St. Pierre's name on there, he was going through George Scolitichia and Ed Lester as well. So all of them have been in communication as well through these. But there's been a lot of communication going back and forth on the street closures, for sure.
Commissioner Perdul.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. I have a lot of concerns, as pointed out by Commissioner Shaw and Commissioner Morgan, especially because of the festival meeting that was held after the festivals last year, and most of the concerns were about Evil Knievel Days and the impact it had in Uptown Butte. And I know that, again, nothing's going to happen on the events, the big stunts are not going to happen on Park Street. But even still, looking at this contract with Frontier Security, it looks like this gentleman, Chuck Janky, or I don't know how to pronounce his last name, the head of Frontier Security, it looks like, just personally to me, he wrote it half asleep, and wrote at the end, "10 additional officers will be on duty for the big stunts on Friday and Saturday night if needed," crossed out for safety and crowd control. And so with that being said, and all of the concerns that Uptown business folks had last year, I'm not sold on whether you all are ready for Evil Knievel Days at this 11th hour. Talking with family over the holiday weekend that just happened, usually by this time there's buzz about who's coming and the stunts that are going to be happening, and who's going to be jumping off a building, and, you know, all of this pre-publicity about Spanky Spangler that's coming to town. So I wonder what, why, as Commissioner Shaw alluded to, the other festivals have got their plans rolling, and this was alluded to of JP when you were talking at the festival meeting, to say, you know what, folks, we will get a handle on this. So I wonder what pieces of the puzzle have fallen out to bring us to tonight? I don't know. I'm just confused.
Commissioner Perdul, you're correct in a lot of aspects as you're talking about here. I think a lot has to do with finances, that Evil Knievel Days is trying to procure the money to be able to put on a lot of these events. And so there was plans for, to jump possibly a fire truck and stuff. And so we secured an area that would be safe this year, that was below the MAC. We've talked with Don Peoples Jr., we've had that secure for almost six months to be able to do that. The problem has been, and Terry Kidd could speak more to this, is the financing to be able to put on that event. They've been trying to get big sponsors to be able to put on, to be able to bring in those acts and stuff. And so that when you look at that security contract, that's what it's alluding to. And from my, we have the event location taken care of, we have the fencing contractor ready to go, we have it secure so that we're not in a situation where we were last year, where there was unsecured areas where people were in danger with that jump. This year, we'd be able to keep everyone up above the MAC, on the football field, and fencing down below where nobody could be down there, not even VIP people. As far as the event goes, that's kind of been on hold just to see if they were able to get that big sponsor to come in and do that. So that's where those 10 extra officers are, and I'll let Terry speak to that.
We won't know until tomorrow if the backing is available for the big stunts, so if anything will happen at the MAC, we won't know that until tomorrow. But it was put in our footprint, just, we can always cancel it, but we don't want to add something to it. And we have advertised on all of our social media, and out of state was our grant money to advertising. There wasn't advertising done locally, too much of it yet. It's coming, though.
Commissioner Ralph, or Commissioner Anderson?
Could I just try and, what's the word I'm looking for? Not clarify, but just to put it all into a nutshell. Am I correct in understanding that, Mr. Gallagher, you feel that everything is going to be happening in a safe manner? And then a follow-up.
Commissioner Ralph, that's one of the main things that we're, is the safety. One of the things that Commissioner Shaw alluded to was communication. I think that we've missed a little bit in the communication piece, but as far as the safety of the events, making sure the contracts are in place, that was another thing, because many of the complaints last year within the festival meeting was the amount of work Butte Silver Bowl did. And so this, we are making sure that it's being done by volunteers, we've secured people to do the trash with CCCS, we've made sure that they have their contracts in place so Butte Silver Bowl won't be taking the labor force off the streets to do this as well. So that was a huge piece of this, and that's why a lot of this is so late coming back in, is because Mr. Schultz and Nick Sanford were really cautious about making sure everything was in place before we signed off on anything. So that was to protect that we're not using Butte Silver Bowl labor. Of course, we're going to support it like we always have with our Park Aid kids, the same as we do with all of the other festivals.
A follow-up, please?
Follow-up, Commissioner Ralph?
Thank you. I think what we're forgetting is we actually owe the Evil Knievel Committee quite a bit of thanks. They are volunteers, they're taking their own time to organize this huge event, and it's not easy. And, you know, you just can't win sometimes, you know? You do your best, and I think they have done a fair job. It sounds like everything is under control. I do, you know, feel bad about the lateness, but I believe that we're in a good spot right now to go forward with this. And so I would make a motion to concur and place on file Communication Number 16-321.
Second motion. Okay, we have a motion to concur and place on file in a second. We still have on the question Commissioner Anderson and Commissioner Henderson.
Thank you very much, Chief Executive. I'm glad to see that some of the stuff has moved off of Park Street because a lot of the calls that I received last year from businesses and people were directly towards Park Street. A lot of it was also because of the lateness and changing of some of the venues, and also a lot of concern about the city workers being taken off of one task and put on, moving of dirt. So I'm glad to see some of those things situated. I am still concerned about the lateness of it, and I understand that things get out of control and trying to juggle all of the balls all at once. But the thing that I worry most about is last year, and echoing Commissioner or Chairman Shaw, is that a lot of these people were not so angry about that, about being displaced or anything. What they were angry about, when I talked to them, was that nobody told them what was going on. And last year, at some of the follow-up meetings and the debriefings, one of the big things that was echoed was better communication. And communication can take place at any time, and for the communication with these places and businesses, starting today, is something that I hope will be remedied next year and in the future years, you know? It's something that, like I said, I understand that some of these things take time and getting planning. I understand that you're still planning some things, but if people are made aware of that situation, I just think it really puts their mind at ease. So I would just really stress that better communication moving forward with the people and the footprint, with the other businesses, with the commissioners, just so that everybody's on the same page, so we don't feel slighted. I think a lot of people's aggravation is that this is just coming up at this last shot, because realistically, this is the last opportunity to amend this. And last year, if I remember correctly, we had an amendment to the footprint the day before the event that we had to put through on an emergency suspension. So I understand that these things happen, but just better communication would go a long way.
Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, I'd just like to say, we had asked JP and Laz to keep us well-informed and also to notify everybody. You have said you've done that. You've notified everybody along the routes now so that there's no, they had a chance to complain or tell you the story, and you guys feel comfortable now, and you've got all the okays from all the department heads and that. So I think that was a big factor, and also the factor about the city workers and that. So you've handled all that, and I think, you know, hopefully, there's some success in this Knievel event, and we wish you well.
Commissioner McDonough?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. First of all, I'd like to thank Terry and JP and Laz for the hard work. I know that in the discussion, we've been talked about my involvement with another festival or another festival, here in town, the Irish Festival. To be honest, with Smoke and Mirrors, we've had issues or occurrences that have happened a half hour before we were supposed to start. We're all volunteers. We planned all year, the 11th hour, the 12th hour, let's say, something changed. We did our best to mitigate it in planning, but we were all volunteer. I think this is the same thing with this organization. I will say that for Knievel Days, you know, with being the first one in the shoot, the first festival that took on, the hard work and the effort to get things moving in the Uptown, you know, it was followed by the Irish Festival and then a successful Folk Festival. So I think that they have a proven track record. Not everybody agrees, and we've seen instances where things could be tightened and improved. Same thing with all the events. But I think that they're making a very good effort to do that. I will say that being tonight when we approve it, if we approve it, that they still have two and a half weeks to circle the wagons, go back to these businesses, come up with a solution, because I'll tell you, I'm a volunteer organization, that it could be, the compromise could be the day before the event that everybody agrees to. So there's a lot of work that goes into it, there's all sorts of moving pieces. I have good faith in our departments. If it wasn't above board or in terms of safety or rigorous planning... If it wasn't above board, or in terms of safety or rigorous planning, they couldn't underwrite it with an insurer. They have that. So I'm in support of it. I still think we have an opportunity to go back and visit with the people that have concerns, to see if we can mitigate it. I could probably name four or five of them that have expressed the same concerns every year, that we still have time to go back and adjust if we need to. But I'm in favor of the event, I thank you for your hard work, and I hope that we support it moving forward.
You had a follow-up, Commissioner Henderson?
Mr. Chief Executive, I did want to say one thing concerning Mr. McDonough's, what he just said, and that is the fact that when he has a problem or anything, the last 30 seconds or so, I said, "If I can help, please call me," and he says, "You're not, I assure you can't help."
Commissioner Fisher?
Thank you, Chief Executive Vincent. Appreciate all your help, what you're doing. You know, we financially support this as a group, the commissioners, we give you the money, do this, and we're kind of, you know, sit back and let it happen. You know, and I guess I will support this 100%, and I hope you do well. I do have concerns. It saddens me to see what's happened to Evel Knievel Days. It saddens me to see what's happened with 4H and the fair, and it concerns me deeply. And I wish you the best, because you got your hands full. Thank you.
Do we need to have a roll call vote on this, or?
Yes, please.
Why not? I'll be stating I won't be voting on this for perceived conflict of interest, not that I expect to vote. Well, I won't, I won't vote, so. All votes in? Clerk, can you please record?
10 aye and 2 nay.
Okay, motion passes. Section 3, take note of the Resolution 1629, referred to judiciary. Section 4, we have Council Bill Ordinance for second reading. Clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Bill Number 1611, Ordinance 1611, An Ordinance Amending Ordinance 204, Section 4 and Chapter 10.24 entitled Traffic Control Devices, and Chapter 10.32 entitled Stop Signs of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code B, S, B, and C, specifically repealing Section 10.24.16014, deleting the traffic control signal located at the intersection of Granite Street and Main Street, and by amending Section 10.32.010, establishing stop signs on Granite Street entering the east and west corners at the intersection of Granite Street and Main Street, and establishing stop signs on Main Street entering the north and south corners at the intersection of Main Street and Granite Street, and providing for an effective date hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Bill Number 16-11, Ordinance Number 16-11, on second reading, and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. This is a roll call, so please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye and 0 nay.
Okay, ordinance passes. Section 5, ordinances and resolutions for final reading. Clerk, can you please read the title?
Council Resolution 16-28, a resolution authorizing the submission of a community development block grant for the purpose of financial assistance for Greeley Neighborhood Stormwater improvements in accordance with the procedures of the Butte Silver Bow Municipal Code and providing for an effective date hearing.
Thank you, Commissioner Shaw.
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. At this time, I move to place Council Resolution Number 16-28 on final reading and passed, having been deemed fully read at length.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion in a second. Is there anything on the question? Seeing none, please cast your votes. All votes in. Clerk, can you please record?
12 aye and 0 nay.
Okay, resolution passes. At this point, is there any public comment on matters that were not on this evening's agenda? Seeing none, move and refer to the calendar of other meetings and events. Anyone have anything to add? Commissioner Sorch?
Thank you, Mr. Chief Executive. You know, just a quick update on the Fair Board. We're having a Fair Board meeting next Tuesday night. Things are actually going fairly smooth. I got to say that people are working together to try to put this, put this thing on. Everything has happened in the past, it appears that, you know, we're trying to do the right thing and just move forward.
Excellent. Commissioner Henderson?
Oh, I, oh, shit.
Okay. Motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting adjourned.